All right.
All right, I think we're good to go if you are.
Okay. Call to order, the regular virtual meeting of the Ria Del City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garance.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Here.
City manager Knop.
Here.
Chief of Police Connor.
Here.
Finance director Dillingham.
Here.
Community development director Caldwell. Water superintendent Jensen. Wastewater superintendent Taylor.
Here.
And city clerk Dunham is present, thank you.
Thank you. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not intended or allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council so directs unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to three minutes. Are there any hands raised or emails?
At least there are no hands raised.
We did receive one public comment.
Would you, would you please read it?
Dear Madam Mayor and councilmembers, this Memorial Day, the Chamber of Commerce would like to honor our local veterans, past and present, by displaying their photos along with a short bio on the front lawn of City Hall. As time is short, the Chamber would appreciate it if the council would consider our request to move ahead with the project. Please see attachments. They submitted three attachments, which I won't be able to share at this time. Thank you for your consideration, Jim Brickley, Ria Del Chamber of Commerce.
What, and he didn't give you a time, like, like, does he need to know today? Or will next council meeting be soon enough? Did, did he?
And I think Mayor Garance, if I may. That is just a temporary facility, so I think staff can just go ahead and approve that.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay. And there are no more emails?
No.
Thank you. And there are no hands have been raised?
No, no hands have been raised.
Thank you. Then we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone on council who wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Mayor Garance, I would like to abstain from item number two, the minutes of the special meeting of March 25th.
Okay, so I guess we'll pull that and... I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'd have to abstain from the special meeting as well.
Okay, so we'll pull item two. Is there any other item that needs to be pulled? Is there anyone whose hands raised to pull anything from the agenda, from the consent calendar?
No, currently I see no hands raised. No emails received.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve items one, three, four, five, and six?
So moved by Johnson.
Is there a second? Well, we have a motion by council, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson and second by council member Woodall. Is that satisfactory?
Yeah.
Thank you. Then we'll have a roll call, please. We have a motion and a second roll call.
Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Garance.
Yes. Motion carries of five zero. Items removed, items, item two. That was removed because you were both not, not present. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor Garance.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve item two? By?
I moved to.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson? Abstain? Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson abstains and Mayor Garance.
Yes. Motion carries three zero. We have three zero with two abstentions. I guess that will be written. Then we will move on to page thirty-nine, the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. The staff report begins on page thirty-nine of the packet. I do want to just take a second to recognize and thank Mayor Garance for our last regularly scheduled meeting with the proclamation in honor of the city employees during COVID-19. You know, in, in talking with the staff, they're very appreciative of the mayor and the council for that recognition. As, as everybody's aware, the, the staff for the city of Ria Del, all of them have gone really above and beyond. We kept City Hall for the most part open and available to the public. We've been able to keep City Hall staffed, the corporation yard staffed and keep operations moving very smoothly through this trying time that's hopefully coming to a conclusion. And so we do, on behalf of all the staff, really, you know, appreciate the recognition that the mayor and the council gave at the last meeting. With that, on your staff report, I do just want to point out that we have, I attended a solid waste task force meeting. It became, you know, really clear to me that regionally recycling contamination is, is becoming more and more of a problem. We're seeing, you know, people mixing organics or non-recyclable items in their waste stream, in their recycling, not just in the containers behind City Hall, but in private areas as well. So we're going to be working together regionally with our other city counterparts and county counterpart to push more of a public education campaign related to recycling contamination. The council is well aware, there have been, you know, changes in the recycling market and rejection of recycling material that is highly contaminated. And so I think we can start to expect our franchise hauler to potentially reject pickups where there's clearly non-recyclable materials in recycling bins and that sort of thing. We don't want it to get that way. So we're going to be working towards a public education effort on a regional basis. So in addition to that, regarding the gateway signage, we have been working with the artists. We're hoping to get a proposal here very shortly to, to reconstruct the sign and also do a touch-up on the City Hall lawn sign as part of our effort to spruce up the gateway effort in the city. I did have some conversations with some of our other regional county and city partners regarding the next slurry seal program. As the council is aware, this is a regional effort to try to efficiently save money and maintain existing road stock in, in its current condition. So for 2021, the project is called off. However, the group has agreed that the summer of 2022, we will be making another effort towards a regional slurry seal program. That's good news and not unanticipated. We figured there would be a break this year with all of the events that have occurred related to COVID. And that pretty much sums up the city manager's portion of the staff report. We're open for any questions that the council has and I'll return it back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open up to council, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson. Have you any questions?
No questions, Mayor Garance, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
No questions from me either, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Two questions. I was wondering if Kyle could tell us when we might be getting the cameras for City Hall?
So we, we just got back the agreement or the, the contract from the city attorney. So we should have something hopefully before the end of the fiscal year, June 30th completed.
Thank you. And one other question. Was community development director Caldwell on the line? I didn't hear.
Yes, I am on the line.
Okay, and I have a question for you. I see you sent the city attorney requested information regarding the cell tower lease and amendments for additional sixty-three square feet. I'm wondering if we're doing amendment, does that enable us to open negotiations on anything else on the lease?
No, unfortunately it does not.
Oh, that's too bad. Okay, thank you. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, just a couple of comments. One, I wanted to thank Kyle for our city manager going to the, taking a day with the HWMA interview to hire a new executive director, which they have selected someone, but they, I don't know if I'm at liberty to divulge that because I think they have to release it through channels. Thank you for that. Also, on the... Or I can do it, rather than do it when we get up to council, since you mentioned the contamination of the recyclables, the, the, going forward when we go with this thirteen eighty-three with the food, way, food waste recyclable. That's a big area of contamination in the... Some of the stuff that came up during our interview process, that in some cases, they actually have to have auditors that come and audit your food waste because that has to have like pretty much to zero contamination. And so that's going to be a big headache going forward as it really falls on the responsibility of the jurisdiction, which I anticipate we won't go out and hire a person to audit it, but we'll have to renegotiate our contact with ecology, who will probably have to supply a person to audit the food waste. Just a heads up. And then the other question was on the interviews and hiring for OIT position. Were we successful in hiring those?
Yeah, so we've extended an offer. There's some, you know, background and other HR checks that we have to do before the position is officially filled, but we're in, we're in that process.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I have no questions. So we will then move on to special presentations. Presentation by JJA Inc. on the city's audit of financial statements and accompanying information for fiscal year 2019, 2020, page forty-five in our packets. City manager.
Thank you. And I think is, if Cheryl's on the line, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Cheryl.
Cheryl is on the line and I was probably just going to turn it over to Brett, who is our auditor from J.
All right, well, thank you and welcome. Thank you, Cheryl, and welcome, Brett.
All right, thank you, Cheryl. And Kyle. So my name is Brett Jones. I was the engagement manager on the audit this year. And I thought I'd just briefly go over the report, just the format of the report because it's kind of, it's kind of a long report. Just want to kind of outline of the format. So we issued an unmodified, unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest opinion that we can give. And you can find that on the very first page of the financial statements. So that's really good. That's what you want to hear. After our artist's report is the management's discussion and analysis section. And this section provides just easy, easily readable analysis of the city's financial activities. That section is prepared by the city. It's not prepared by us. It's really just a great section to look at if you just want an overview of the financial statements themselves. Following the financial statements are the government-wide, or excuse me, following the MBNA are the government-wide financial statements. Those are prepared on an accrual basis of accounting. So that's where you'll find your long-term assets, liabilities. Following the government-wide financial statements are the fund financial statements, starting on page twenty-four. The fund financial statements are prepared on a modified accrual basis of accounting, which is more similar to a cash basis with a shorter accrual period, typically like sixty days. Following the financial statements are the notes. Notes will provide, provide some additional disclosures about the balances and the city's policies, accounting policies, that sort of thing. They're all in the notes. And in addition to the financial statements we have issued, we've also issued our communications letter to the council. It's a standard letter. If we had any, any findings to disclose, any difficulties with the audits, any, any concerns that we need to address with the council, they would be in this letter. And we are pleased to report that we don't have anything. There's no findings, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. So that's really, really great considering.
Brett?
Here.
Brett, could you repeat that again one more time?
Yeah, so we had no findings, no internal control.
That's great news.
Did my audio cut out there? Yeah, so, sorry. Everything were really well this year. So big thanks to Cheryl. I know this year was really, really different. You know, we had, we did all of our work remotely. So there is a lot of back and forth with scanning documents with the staff there, but we were able to get everything we needed to do our job. So again, thank you to Cheryl and her staff for being very accommodating. So with that, I can answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the audit and thank you for the, the wonderful results. And thank you, Cheryl, for, for your, everything you've done this year to make all of this work out the way it did. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Wilson?
No, I have, I have no.
Councilmember Woodall?
No, I just also wanted to thank Cheryl and the staff because this was a challenging year. And this is just great news to have this done and such good conditions. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
I'm just going to say thank you and hooray and no questions from me. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. I just wanted to shout out a congratulations to Cheryl and the rest of the accounting team for doing such a marvelous job. Thank you again.
Thank you. So thank you again, Brett, for being here. And I think then there is no, that's a receiving file. So we can move on to our next item.
Mayor?
Yes.
We might say there's any public comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Are there any hands raised or emails?
There seems to currently be no hands raised.
Okay.
And there are no emails received.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, city manager. Okay. It seemed odd. I was moving on a little stiltedly. Okay, so now we will move on to special call items. Provide staff direction related to the 2020 CalOES PSPS resiliency allocation. Page one forty-five in our packets. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So this is really just kind of an update as to where we are in this, in this allocation cycle. In our special meeting, the council was briefed that we did receive an allocation of $295,000 from CalOES for energy resiliency projects. One of the constraining factors, or the main constraining factor with this allocation is that the funds have to be expended by October 31st of this year, which is for government, that is a tight timeline to do. Other than that, generally speaking, the, the allocation agreement that the council authorized me to sign has really kind of very few restrictions related to the funding other than to focus in on energy resiliency and to not, you know, pay for either the staff time or professional services out of the grant award or out of the allocation. So with that, we've been in discussions with Redwood Coast Energy Authority as well. It's our city engineer, THD, on a couple of items regarding the implementation of the project right now in conjunction with Redwood Coast Energy Authority. We're looking at potentially issuing an RFP for a design-build type of contract with an energy firm either locally or elsewhere to perform the installation, at the very least, of the potential equipment. So because this was an energy resiliency grant and the grant application itself focused on City Hall and the police department, which currently do not have any energy backup system whatsoever other than some batteries that support our IT and phone infrastructure for probably about thirty minutes at a time. The attached on page one forty-six is just a draft, very preliminary of what we're kind of looking at potentially putting into a design-build type of contract. So starting with the base bid, it would be focused in on City Hall, including the installation of a 22 KW solar array on the roof of City Hall, the installation of battery energy storage systems, as well as the installation of a natural gas generator. And then there's also going to be some needed improvements to the electrical interface at City Hall. So that was part of our exploration from about a year ago is that the infrastructure into City Hall needs a pretty significant update. So, so what that would do is, is basically provide a resilient City Hall energy system that, that would definitely, you know, provide resiliency, not just during PSPs, but during other similar events. The, right now, what we're considering doing, because we don't know exactly what the cost would be of that, however, it's not going to exceed $295,000. We broke the other portions into additive alternatives to be all bid on at once. And then if there's a decision later to scale down the project, we'll have that ability. But because the grant is pretty flexible, it's just required to be spent on essential facilities. The additive alternative, alternative A would be to provide and install a grid-tied solar PV system down at the wastewater treatment plant. Again, similar in size to the City Hall system at about 24 KW. That would be tied in and help reduce the PGV bill and also would be tied into the new Tesla batteries that are going to be installed shortly over the summer. So that would provide an additional incentive and resiliency in the system to, to be able to weather PSPs. The additive alternative B is work on the city's two wastewater lift stations that help supply the wastewater treatment plant with what it needs. So right now, we have two lift stations, both with generators that do need to be replaced. And so we're looking at some different alternatives. This one is a little bit more tricky than the others because we've already done a feasibility analysis of solar at both City Hall and both the corporation yards. So there's already been a lot of preliminary work on that. However, there has not been a lot of work on our lift station. So we're gathering that information now and trying to assess the generator sizing, whether we can connect that to natural gas, have a natural gas generator system with the propane backup. We're looking at batteries, energy storage at those facilities, but I think that's going to probably be cost prohibitive with the sizing that will be required. And so, so we're looking at all of those options. And alternative options would include purchasing, say, a diesel or a gas generator for those facilities. But again, we're trying to cost these out and figure out the best route forward. So on page one hundred and forty-seven, this is just a draft cost scenario of a potential proposal, one of the first drafts that we looked at. In terms of the, the individual costs, most of these numbers are based to get the RCA feasibility study. That was done. So RCA had identified a cost estimated at about seventy-eight thousand dollars. And then we have some other numbers there that have, I would say loose or they're just rough estimates in terms of the cost of these, of these items. Some may be higher and some may be lower when we get to actual implementation. So looking at, you know, the City Hall projects, corporation yard and lift stations altogether, it would be, assuming that those numbers are correct and again, with a grain of salt, there would need to be an additional subsidy from another fund in the city. So if it was wastewater, it'd be the wastewater capital fund in, in the amount of, we're just estimating right now about $60,000. So that's just what preliminary we're looking at. As we move forward, obviously, we'll get a clearer definition of, of what exactly the project is. But I wanted to bring it to the council as soon as possible to get your input so we don't, you know... But I wanted to bring it to the council as soon as possible to get your input, so we don't, you know, head down a path that the council, uh, is not interested in going, uh, or whether this, uh, represents, uh, the basic, uh, path. Uh, uh, you know, for three different types of facilities. One is City Hall, the Corporation Yard and our two lift stations. And to try to put those all in a package and get those done, uh, that, that will likely, uh, require an additional subsidy beyond the $295,000 that is available through the state. So with that, I will, uh, return to the council, see if there's any questions of staff or myself.
Thank you, uh, city manager. Sounds fantastic. Um, I'll open it up to the council. Um, council member Carter.
Hi, thank you. Um, so just first things first, Kyle, I might have missed something in the very beginning. Um, you talked about the projects being focused on City Hall and Police Department, and I didn't quite hear if that's what the state said we had to do, or if that was kind of our plan internally.
So the, the grant, uh, agreement, so the grant application was for City Hall and it is a power, uh, P S P S resiliency grant. The only facility that you do not have any kind of energy resiliency is with Police Department, with the, uh, with the City Hall building itself. So, um, so to stay, uh, in, uh, in line with the, the grant, we would recommend that we do, uh, work at City Hall. Now, the scope and size of that, uh, is up to the council, but specifically in this grant proposal or in the allocation, in what staff has seen and what staff has signed so far, it did not specifically mention City Hall. So, uh, so in theory, the grant could be, uh, reapplied to other essential facilities, but I can't, you know, guarantee that.
Right. Okay. Now, I just wanted to clarify if I had heard you right or not. Um, after, beyond that, I, I really appreciate the way this is laid out on page one forty-seven. It makes it really easy to comprehend and see it all laid out like that. So thank you. Um, I also want to thank you for the speed with which city staff put this together. That's quick turnaround. Um, last thing I want to say is I know that this is a very preliminary draft and there'll be time to get into the nitpicky details as we learn more and stuff like that. So, um, instead of advocating or not advocating for any certain things on this list, I do want to advocate for kind of coming up with overarching questions that maybe help focus and guide our discussions and therefore decisions on where the money goes. Uh, for me, one of those questions would be to really look at what kind of services are we providing to, um, members of the community during a power outage? Like what hands-on tangible right now, like of these three, um, who is providing what services to the community, um, to the people of Ria Del? And go from there. And then what parts of our critical infrastructure need the most help, the most attention, or what's, what's the most broken now? Uh, so like you say, Police Department, you know, just questions that help us prioritize, focus and guide a discussion. I don't know if that makes any sense, but that's, sums up what I'm going to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, council member Carter. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Uh, Kyle, I was wondering if, uh, for the, in lieu of the other fund match coming from the city, if there's any possibility of getting, uh, an energy grant from R C E A.
So I have not specifically, uh, explored that with ours. Um, I definitely, uh, posed that question to them. Um, I did have, you know, several conversations with, uh, Paulie out of R C E A. Um, he didn't mention specifically any, any funds available through ours, that I also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim. Council member Wilson.
Thank you. Don't we have with the, what all does the Tesla grant cover at the Corp- Corporation Yard? Wasn't it taken care of? The yard?
Uh, outside of this funding, there's no other, uh, funding to, uh, to do a solar project, um, unless, uh, we take basically the limited sewer capital funding that we do have towards, uh, towards solar. So, um, right now we're kind of in a whole link pattern related to, uh, the capital projects there, just because the state has kind of identified the I N I issue and sanitary sewer overflow as the number one priority um, or attention.
Well, how, how are we charging the batteries? We're just going to put the batteries at the, at the corporate ground off the grid?
Yeah, so without any, any solar, batteries would be charged, um, during off-peak hours, um, and then used during peak, uh, peak pricing to kind of even out, uh, the, uh, the cost of operating the system. Uh, with solar, uh, that there would be, you know, essentially a, a free energy subsidy, uh, into the batteries, uh, to also assist with that, which would, you know, reduce, uh, cost.
And are, are we, are we already looking into doing, uh, new generators at the lift stations?
So it's not on our, our capital plan, but it should be something that needs to be in the budget one way or the other for this year. So, uh, uh, so if we, uh, in the budget process, uh, obviously we would be including this, uh, grant for expenditure between, you know, July first and October thirty-first. Um, I do think that that is something that we, uh, will need to make a recommendation that we include. Uh, some money if it isn't able to be funded through this, uh, particular project, but to at least replace the generators at the facilities.
All right. Uh, and, and I probably need to just wait and see what, where you're going out for a request proposal. See what comes back, you know, and then we know where we stand on that. And, um, and, and again, as a, as council member Carter said, we, I agree that we need to prioritize, particularly City Hall, as we discussed earlier, when you went out and applied for this, that that was, you know, uh, backing up our fleet and our city services for, um, coordinating, uh, the, the, whatever needs to be taken care of in the city is, is a big deal. Uh, the other item, uh, regards to, uh, Portman Johnson's, uh, question on R C E A. I've never heard anything in the meetings ever talk about, um, any kind of grants for, um, P S P S. I'm not saying that they're not there, but I, they've never brought it up in discussion, uh, about making something available for that. If there is something, we go for it. If not, um, uh, basically I'm saying, don't get your hopes up. I don't think it's there. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Woodall.
Yes, um, hi, um, when you were mentioning additive, um, three and four additive, alternate B and alternate C, did you mention, did you mention, or did I understand you to say that, um, alternate B would probably be more expensive than alternate C?
In, in theory, yes. Uh, I mean, what we're looking, uh, we're, I'm, we're learning new things every day about sizing of generators, um, and what is really going to be required to, to power the facilities. Um, it does look like they're going to have to be fairly sizable and expensive, uh, uh, generators. So, um, so this is already outdated. Um, the, on page one forty-six, it mentions a thirteen K W generator. Um, we're probably looking more in the range of forty plus, and so the cost, uh, dramatically escalates from there. Um, so a- again, part of our, our problem, uh, for the, uh, the lift stations is kind of just a lack of an initial feasibility study. Uh, just, you know, just specifically outline, um, here's what's possible and here's, here's what, uh, what you can do. And here's what you need. Um, so we're kind of having to, uh, create that at this point in time. And so in theory, if you're just replacing a gas generator with another gas generator, um, that probably wouldn't be the most, uh, cost efficient way. But I do note that, uh, our wastewater superintendent, uh, Derek Taylor, has been advocating for, uh, natural gas, uh, connection, uh, to the system. It does make a lot of sense in terms of, uh, it being able to operate, uh, independently without a lot of, uh, fussing over, uh, fuel, which has to be stored over long periods of time. And then during P S P Ss, where most, you know, massive power outages, uh, fuel is a scarce commodity to find. And, uh, during our last major P S P S event, uh, staff, uh, would ended up spending, uh, an important amount of time, uh, seeking out fuel to keep our main generator, uh, functioning, uh, when there were other issues that we needed to be, uh, addressing. So, uh, so there, there's kind of a cost benefit analysis that's coming down the road to kind of take a look at our options and make sure we're getting, uh, really what we need for the long, long.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question. And you know, I'm, I'm, I don't know if anybody's hearing me all right, but I'm having a terrible time with echoes uh, on the phone. Uh, your, Kyle is very hard to hear for, for me.
Yeah, Kyle, you are. There's some, um, your voice is kind of, you can hear you, but it's kind of at a distance versus, a- a- and it goes in and out, where you're very, very clear and then it goes out to, we can hear you, but it's, um, like at a distance.
Yes, it's hard.
Right. Thank you, um, council member Woodall. Um, and, um, I think all of the questions have been really asked. Um, I, I, I don't know if, um, the, the draft cost scenario is, um, it, well, it's clearly somewhat outdated because of, of the generator, uh, the thirteen watts you were just speaking of. So, um, it, it would be good if, if we could fit that all in and, and, and have the ability to, um, do the fund match, um, because I think that, um, you know, if we have the solar array and the, uh, backup system at City Hall, then that would allow us to, um, possibly, uh, provide charging stations if we were in a, for the community if P S P S happened or, um, you know, and you just spoke of, of, uh, being able at the, at the, um, corp yard, being able to allow our staff to continue work and not just chasing after fuel, and you know, if we do certain things. So I think that it's, um, a great initial plan and I look forward to seeing it fleshed out to, you know, you go out and you find whatever information you need to, to come back to us and, and show us. And if it, if it could all be done, it would be, uh, really a beautiful thing. But, um, I do look forward to, to seeing what it is you come back with for the final. Um, is there, um, any action you require of us? City manager.
Did you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, there's no, no actions is required.
Okay. Well, thank you for, um, your work. Yeah, um, council member, uh, Mayor Pro Tim.
You may want to ask if there's any public comment.
I know. That's really getting away from me today. Are there any hand, thank you. Are there any hands raised or, uh, emails?
Currently, it looks like there is no hands raised.
And no public comments.
Thank you.
Deborah, you're muted.
Thank you, um, for all you've done, all the work you put into it. And, um, it's exciting. It, it's exciting to be able to even, you know, have this conversation and to be able to think we can bring our, our city buildings up to, you know, uh, current times. So, so that's great. Thank you. And we will now move on to the discussion of the cost recovery for abatement of four eighty-three Fourth Avenue, page one forty-eight in our packet. Chief Connor.
Good evening, Mayor Garance, members of the city council. On September second of twenty twenty, the city conducted an abatement on the property located at four eighty-three Fourth Avenue. That included the Public Works crew using a backhoe to load a thirty-yard dumpster full of trash and solid waste. It was determined that the city's cost for that abatement is two thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and six cents. Uh, that assessment was sent to the property owner via certified mail and was returned unclaimed. However, she was made aware of the cost and as of, uh, this afternoon, as far as I know, she has not made any attempt to either pay that bill or make some kind of plans for a, a payment plan. Um, Ria Del Municipal Code covers the process for the city recovering its cost, including putting a lien on the property and having it added to the tax rolls. Um, those code sections reference County Government Code Section thirty-eight seventy-three point five, which, uh, outlines the process for cities to, uh, establish taxes and assessments on properties. That, uh, code section requires two meetings, um, before the, the assessment is established. Uh, first being a public meeting, the second being a public hearing. Uh, our current situation is fulfilling the public meeting requirement and it is anticipated that a public hearing will be, um, conducted on June first, twenty twenty-one, as that public hearing requires a forty-five K notice to the property owner. With that, I'll turn it back and try and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chief Connor. Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Garance and chief. I've been by four eighty-three Fourth Avenue a couple times in the last few days and, uh, it looks like they're headed for another abatement order. They just must love garbage, uh, down there and, uh, you know, I think we absolutely need to move forward, um, and recoup all of our expenses. Thank you, Mayor Garance.
Thank you. Uh, council member Carter.
Davis Gordon, that's been an ongoing eyesore and it doesn't seem to, like cleaning it up makes it any better. So, um, yeah, if we can put a lien on the property and move forward with a public hearing, great. No, no further comment.
Thank you. Council member Woodall.
No, I agree. We should go ahead and pursue this. And as, um, council member Johnson said, they're already starting again. Now they've got a refrigerator sitting out front. So, no, let's go ahead and do it.
Council member Wilson.
Right on.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We are all unanimously behind this action. So, uh,
it needs to get publicly noticed to the rest of the community that this is what's.
Absolutely. Uh, are there any, uh, public, um, are there any hands raised or public comment emailed in?
It does not, it does not appear to have any hands raised at the moment.
No emails.
Thank you. So I think we are all on the same page there. So we will now move on to ordinances and special resolutions. Introduction, first reading by title only of ordinance number three eight four dash two zero two one, amending the existing street dedication and improvement regulations, section seventeen point thirty point thirty-three one zero, um, two in per ins and six in per ins of the Ria Del Municipal Code. That is on page one fifty-one of our packet. And I will turn that over then to Community Development Director, Kevin Caldwell.
Mayor Garance, members of the council, thank you very much. Uh, as the mayor indicated, it says, start on page one fifty-one of your pack. As the mayor indicated, it says, start on page 151 of your packet and staff has recommended that we adopt this ordinance. And the intent here is actually to streamline the process, basically for the applicant. Not only will it streamline, it will actually save the applicant money, should they contend or not agree with the dedication or improvement requirements. If you look at page 152 of your packet, the indented area talks about subsection two, the requirement, and then subsection six, the waiver. And what we're recommending is the Public Works Director, which is in fact the city manager, be allowed to make these decisions. Historically, from what I understand, this is what has happened actually throughout the city for the last, I don't know how many years. But what we're doing is trying to reflect the process that actually occurs. And again, we're recommending it because it's streamlined the process for not only the property owner in terms of times and cost. And that's the main issue here is we want to streamline the process. And should the applicant or the property owner not be satisfied with the Public Works Director, they could appeal it to the City Council. Right now, going to the Planning Commission costs an applicant $250. If they want to pursue it to the City Council, it costs an additional $250. So again, the bottom line is here, this, this is a time-saving, cost-saving amendment to the city code. And as such, we recommend that your council open up the public hearing, take public comment, and then continue the side on your meeting of April 20th for the second reading adoption and approval. If the council has any questions or if the public have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to address them.
Thank you.
And I apologize for any feedback. I too am getting feedback myself.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll open it up to council, Councilmember Wilson?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
No, I talked to Kevin today, so all my questions are answered.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
No questions for me. I think I get it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Protim Johnson?
No questions, Mayor Garance.
Okay, and I think I had my questions answered as well. Are there any hands raised or emails?
There are no hands raised and no emails received.
Thank you. So then we will, let's see, do I need to do a motion? Let me find my page. Okay.
Mayor Garance, I may as a motion to continue the item.
Yeah, that's what I was just getting to. So is there a motion to accept the first reading and continue to the second reading of this ordinance?
Don't move by Johnson.
You have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson? Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Now we are on to the first reading. Introduction, first reading by title only of ordinance number 385-2021, amending section slash table 17.20.070 of the Riedel Municipal Code and resolution number 1484-2021, amending table 1-2 of the land use plan to exclude agricultural structures in the lot coverage calculation, provided the applicant executes a surety bond to ensure the removal of all abandoned greenhouses on concrete slabs so as not to exceed the 10% lot coverage within two years of the cessation of commercial use of the structures. Page 162 in our packets and that will be turned over to Community Director Caldwell.
Mayor Garance, member of the council, as indicated, this is on page 162 of your packet. This item recently came to light reviewing part of the map pages up on the Dinsmore Plateau. Currently, the rural designation limits lot coverage to 10%, which is somewhat strange in the fact that natural resource designation, open space designation limits lot coverage at 90%. The city clerk actually went through the clerk files to try to find out a bit of background about this, how it came about. Unfortunately, we could not find anything on how the 10% came about. It should be noted that the county's agricultural zoning designations allow lot coverage up to 35%. One of the reasons that we're bringing this towards your attention is right now, the city, as you know, has allowed commercial cannabis cultivation up on the Dinsmore Plateau with a conditional use permit. One of our concerns is that limiting lot coverage to 10% is not only affecting the cannabis cultivators' operations, potentially it's affecting the city revenue that we receive as part of cannabis cultivation taxes, which is $2 per square foot. As I just indicated, we could not find any reason why 10% was actually adopted. We are recommending that agricultural structures not be included in the lot coverage calculations and those with concrete slab floors actually be required to be removed or remediated within two years of cessation of any commercial cannabis activities. And the reason for that is not to displace prime ag land. And although the, the flat up there is about 80 acres, roughly about a third of it or about 23 acres of it is considered prime ag land, and we want to maintain that prime ag land as, as much as possible. So with that, staff is recommending, as indicated on page 162, that we amend section table 17.20070 of the zoning regulations and table one point, or 1-2 of the land use plan, which is the general plan, and that's why a resolution is required other than ordinance, to allow or to exclude agricultural structures in the lot coverage calculation, provided they provide a surety bond to ensure the removal of those structures, again, within two years after no commercial use of those structures is used. With that, I'll answer any questions that the council may have. I have reached out to some of the cannabis farmers up there and they felt that this, this amendment would certainly help them. It would certainly help the, the city as far as generating the anticipated tax revenue that we anticipated when we adopted our cannabis regulations to allow activities up there on the Dinsmore Plateau. Again, if your council has any questions or if members of the public have any questions, I would be more than happy to try to address those questions.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll open it up to the council now. Councilmember Woodall?
Yes, a question, how does an surety bond work?
It's, it's basically a performance bond where the applicant typically pays 3% to 5% of the estimated demolition cost. And they, they go through an insurance broker and that bond provided city. So if in case an operator does not remove the structures with those concrete slabs, we have the financial assurance, a bond to cover the total of that. And we would actually make that happen through that bond, similar to a performance bond with a deported improvement agreement, substitutions.
Okay, well, I think that's a great idea because I like the idea of removing the cement. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
It sounds to me like, if I'm understanding this correctly, that, how the, how the 10% coverage is, if I understand it correctly, it says that you can only have 10% of the lot covered is, is what our.
Correct, yeah. So if you had a 10-acre parcel, for example, it would be limited to 10%. And I didn't break it down for a 10-acre parcel, for a 5-acre parcel, roughly just because of the setbacks along with 20 feet on all sides, you're looking at almost 20,000 square feet right there. So just the setbacks alone limit the lot coverage. I hope that answered your question.
Well, yeah, sort of, but what it sounds like is like it's, it was like a clerical error when they got wrote. It almost sounds like it's backwards, that there should be, you know, 10% of open space.
It does almost sound that way, especially given the fact when you look at designation, which again is a truly open space designation, they allow up to 90% of lot coverage. And that's why you asked the city clerk to actually go back to the records to find out how this 10% came to be. And unfortunately, we could not find any record of how that came up to 10%.
If it's a clerical error, then it just needs, if it was, whatever, either way, you correct it and it sounds like you're, you're, you're doing the right thing. So I'm good with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see, Mayor Protim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. You know, just a, a comment, you know, it's always good to periodically review our ordinance and, and resolutions to see if, if we're, if we're in the 21st century or, or we're back, you know, 55 years ago or so. And I've got no problem at all with this ordinance and resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
No questions for me. I think I've got my mind wrapped around this one and good to go.
Okay, and I have no questions. I, I don't know, I, I think I have to acknowledge that I did have communication with two of the businesses. They just, they called, one called, one emailed and just told me what was happening when this ordinance was discovered, how, what, what it was, what was stated was discovered and their concerns. And so I listened and that was the extent of my communication, but I just think I'm supposed to report that, so that's what I'm doing. I have no questions, however. So we want to continue this to the next meeting for the second reading. Is there a motion to accept the first reading and, and continue it to the second?
Mayor Garance?
Oh, is there? Is there? No, 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 no. I know, I caught myself. Hands raised or emails?
There currently are no hands raised.
There are no emails.
Thank you. Was that it? Was that what you were going to tell me?
Well, now I'll make a motion, Mayor Garance, to a reading of ordinance 385-2021 and to adopt resolution 1484-2021.
We have a motion to accept and continue to next meeting for the second reading. And is there a second?
I'll second one.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Final item is the introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance number 386-2021, establishing industrial hemp regulations banning the cultivation of industrial hemp in the city, section 17.30.180 of the Riedel Municipal Code and renumbering general provisions and exceptions, sections 17.30.010-17 point, or through, I think is what that means, 17.30.370 to accommodate the proposed industrial hemp regulations. Community Director Caldwell?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. This item starts page 182 of your packet. As the council is most likely aware, our federal farm bill of 2018 allows commercial hemp cultivation in all states. Hemp cultivation is actually regulated by the county, the county agricultural department. At the time, it was approved, there was no fire nor insect cultivated hemp in the city of Riedel. As the council is probably aware, based on concerns from a number of cannabis farmers, Humboldt County actually adopted a ban on hemp regulations sometime late last year. We did not have much of a concern until we actually understood that a property owner on the Dinsmore Plateau made application for a 20-acre industrial camp. At the time, we were not that concerned about it because there was no commercial cannabis applications that had been submitted up there. In the meantime, we received two commercial cannabis applications, both would have been approved, and a third was recently submitted up there. These cannabis cultivators have expressed concern regarding hemp production up on the plateau and the potential for cross pollination and introduction of pests commonly related to hemp. As part, department or the city staff is recommending, based on their concerns, based on literature that we have read, that we establish a hemp moratorium in the city of Riedel. One of the things that we discovered is that the operator up there in the Dinsmore Plateau is actually utilizing a loophole in the federal regulations to create a Delta 8 compound, which is a hemp compound that actually has psychoactive activities or psychoactive effects similar to cannabis. And that's actually on page 183, if you take a look at your staff report, it's the third or fourth paragraph down. We've included a couple attachments, one from the New York Times, one from Politico that talk about a reference to the federal loophole and the Delta 8 impact. Delta 8 indicated is psychoactive product of hemp and is actually a manufactured product. Regardless of that, because of the potential for cross pollination, because of the potential for the introduction of pests normally associated with hemp, and because of the investment that not only the farmers have, our cannabis farmers are actually investing up there on the Dinsmore Plateau. And the primary reason that the city allows cannabis activities up there generate much of revenue for the city, we are recommending that your city council adopt a ban on industrial hemp up there. Again, I hope that you all had a chance to, to read this information. I found the both New York Times article and the political articles were fascinating. There's also an article in there that, that's from the Marijuana Business Magazine that talks about the potential for cross pollination. There are some studies that suggest that cross pollination could occur as far away as the Dinsmore Plateau. The bottom line, in order to protect our cannabis farmers, in order to protect the city's competitive revenue, the staff has recommended oppose a ban on industrial cultivation within the city of Riedel. Therefore, we recommend that council approve the first reading, continue the second reading and adoption to your meeting of April 20th. Take any public comment that may be out there and if there are questions that I may answer, I'll be more than happy to try.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. I'll open it up to council, Mayor Protim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Kevin, you indicated that there's actually been some hemp growing and harvesting on the. growing and harvesting up on the plateau, is that correct?
That's my understanding of the county agricultural department. I cannot quantify that amount, I know that the applicant was approved for twenty acres. Um, I don't believe twenty acres was grown, I don't know how much was grown.
Could you, before our next meeting, when we're scheduled to approve this ordinance, uh, find out if there's any hemp growing up there or what the plans of the farmers are for that twenty acre parcel?
I, I can and, uh, I will find out. Um, right now it's actually not a twenty acre parcel, they were just approved for twenty acres of hemp cultivation. Um, and again, I don't know exactly how much was cultivated last year, but I will reach out to the county agricultural department to see if they may have that answer.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's all I had, Mayor Garance.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Carter?
Um, no, I think, I think I'm good, I think I'm trying to write my mind around how many kinds of THC there are. Overwhelming. Um, but no, it sounds good, it makes sense to me, I look forward to hearing more about this at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson? Thank you, Councilmember Woodall?
No, I think it's, uh, to the city's benefit to ban the hemp up there. And, um, wanted to thank Kevin for all the information he gave about the hemp because it was really interesting.
Thank you, and I have no questions, are there any hands raised or emails?
There does not currently seem to be any hands raised.
And no emails received.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Garance, if I, uh, for just a quick second, if I could chime in and
Absolutely.
if there are, are folks on the, the call, uh, who want to participate, it might be your first Zoom call. You'll want to press star nine on your phone or raise your hand via the, uh, Zoom app uh, to, for the, in order for the mayor to call you. Um, or press star six or unmute yourself uh, via the app in order to, to speak now. Um, I want to give uh, a little bit of time to folks to figure that out because I, I think there might be public comment.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna see if two of the numbers I don't recognize are, um, are trying to speak.
Okay.
So I'm asking them to unmute and see if they have any comment um, via the app.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, how's it going?
Good, how are you? Could you tell what's your name?
Good.
Good.
Yeah, my name's Yama Shaffer.
Okay. And your address?
And I'm one of the.
Well, not, I guess that's not a Zoom thing, so go ahead.
Um, yeah, I was one of the, uh, people interested in purchasing a property up on the plateau and uh, there is some conflict of interest as far as the cultivation of hemp and, uh, regular marijuana, so I just wanted to put that in. It's, you know, the, the two are kind of hard to grow together and there's problems with that, so I just wanted to point that out. Thanks for your.
Thank you for calling in and participating. Is there another caller?
Thank you.
And again, it's star six to unmute yourself. Okay, they're, they're not unmuting, so I think, I think that are the only other mystery callers, so.
Okay, okay, well, um, I appreciate that, uh, someone actually called in and gave voice, that was, that was cool. So, um, having no other, um, hands raised or emails, I will ask for a motion to accept the initial introduction and first reading of ordinance number three eight six dash two zero two one and, um, and a motion to accept and continue.
So made by Johnson.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, Carter.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Mayor Carter?
Was that my name? Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes, motion carries five zero. Now we are on to council reports and communications. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Um, I, I see that the governor has, uh, announced that, uh, the fact is April fifteenth that, uh, California is going to be changing a little bit as far as, uh, meetings and, uh, concerts and things like that with, uh, plans by, for the middle of June to have things semi back to normal. Um, wow, do I look forward to having, uh, in person, same place, city council meetings with, uh, folk in the audience. Uh, I am so eager. Uh, besides that, uh, the last chance grade stakeholders meeting, uh, all four working groups will be meeting on the twenty second of this month to, uh, probably end up, uh, recommending one of two, uh, different alternatives or options. Uh, it's getting down to, uh, to crunch time, uh, as far as those of us who have been on the, uh, stakeholders group for many years and, uh, it's, uh, it's long overdue. Um, every time I go up there, I, I feel a real sense of urgency. Um, thank you, Mayor Garance, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. Um, oh, just like Gordon, I can't wait to be back to normal. Um, there's a chair in there, I've never sat it. Um, so I had a meeting for the Redwood Regional Economic Development Commission, uh, last month and we heard a program from the Nordic Aqua Farm, uh, representatives. That's the aquaculture fish farm getting built, maybe on Samoa Peninsula. Uh, it was interesting, it seems like it's still in the permitting phase. Um, and there's a whole lot of work still to do on that. Um, and then I also did my new council member tour of the public works yard and the wastewater treatment plant and the water plant and everything, so, um, that was super informative and I highly recommend anybody do that tour, it's nice to get a hands-on feel for how the city works and I'm happy to have that, so thank you city staff for making that happen and, and doing such a good job at what you do, guys. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Um, all I, all I have, uh, was just put by, I said earlier about, uh, HWMA selecting a new, um, executive director. And we'll look forward to that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Well, I have to chime in with Councilman Johnson, um, after tonight, when I could hear um, several of the comments and several of the explanations, thank goodness I had gone in and talked today. So I sort of understood them, I wouldn't, wouldn't have been able to make heads or tails out of some of the comments. And I haven't had any meetings, but I also went on the tour with Councilman Carter and, um, I've, I've been quite a few of them, but you know, every once in a while, it's nice to go again, it's nice to be able to talk to the public works, you know, people and ask questions when, you know, they're explaining it to you. I want to thank them for taking the time for doing that. That's it.
Thank you. Um, and I had, um, I've had several meetings, but I had a meeting with the Eureka, uh, traffic. Uh, we, they're doing, uh, traffic, um, there's a committee that we've, uh, that, uh, Mayor Seaman has gotten together with, um, um, members from each city because all cities drive through Eureka and they're trying to sort out some, uh, some, uh, way to do a campaign for public safety, to teach people, to inform people, different information. Um, you know, doing surveys of, um, eighteen to thirty four year olds to find out what their issues are. Um, just, uh, pretty much, um, the whole, you know, encompassing all things traffic, but trying to, um, get Eureka to be in a safer space for, um, just for traffic. Um, it's important for everyone, it's important for all of our cities, we don't want accidents, we don't want, you know, um, pedestrians injured, but Eureka has an over.
Are we still here?
I think we're frozen.
Mayor Garance?
Yes?
Uh, you froze for
Okay.
about ten seconds.
Okay, well, I was just saying, you know, about the, the, um, traffic in Eureka and, um, they, um, we're just trying to work out a campaign, an educational campaign and, um, that's, that's what this committee is about, so, um, it's interesting. And, um, we have another meeting coming up, I think on Friday or, or next Monday. Um, anyway, um, and just as, just as an interesting point, um, I had a communication from, um, a, a person, a, a wonderful, it seemed, a wonderful, um, woman in Augusta, Georgia, who watched our city council meetings, so I, there, there's a lot to be said for, um, for Zoom and, and even, even when we get back, I hope that somehow we can still incorporate that because I think we have reached more people, even in our own community and clearly all the way to Augusta, Georgia, thank you, Mary, for watching. Um, because that little camera we have in City Hall, we're very far away, people can't hear us, they kind of just see us. So hopefully, when we are back in, in chamber, we can still have a Zoom portion so that we can get out to, to more people. That was amazing when I got this, when I got this email, I was, wow, Augusta, Georgia, that's amazing. So, um, anyway, that's, um, that's all I have and, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move by Johnson.
Okay, well, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second and we will see you on April twentieth, two thousand twenty one. Thank you, everybody, good night.
Thank you, good night.